Good evening and welcome to the November 16th meeting of the Revere City Council. Everyone, please rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Rigo is absent, Councillor Gino?
Here.
Here, Councillor Guanasso?
Here.
Here, Councillor Haas?
Here.
Here, Councillor McKenna?
Here.
Here, Councillor Morabito?
Here.
Here, Councillor Nowosowski?
Here.
Here, Councillor Patch?
Here.
Here, Councillor Riordan?
Here.
Here, Councillor Zambudo?
Here.
Here, and Council President Powers?
Here.
Here, Quorum is present, Calendar Item Number One, Joint Meeting of the Utility Companies to Discuss Double Polls.
Gentlemen. Good evening. State your name and address, please.
Yep, Stan Juszczyk, Verizon with offices at 63 High Street, Danvus, Massachusetts.
Dan Cameron with National Grid, offices at 170 Medford Street in Malden.
Good evening. I'm going to open this up to councillors who may have questions regarding double polls. Councillor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've had a couple of inquiries since the last time we met. One in reference to the poll located near 77 Romney Road. And I have, on my particular printout, I have ticket numbers. Now, you always reference that we wanted poll numbers. Now, is a ticket number the same as a poll number?
That would represent really an internal job number.
Okay, so if I gave you those numbers, you would know which polls I'm talking about?
Yeah, I see two polls in Romney Road.
There's two polls in Romney Road. And the one that I'm really interested in is the one where Mrs. Bermanti in 77 Romney Road is asked about, and it was supposed to be removed a while ago, and it's still in place there. We're wondering, how soon is it going to be before that is replaced and removed?
Councillor, that's the ball in court with us, National Grid. We've been working in Revere for the last month or so.
Right.
So, we can get that.
So, what do we look for? What are we looking for, timeframe?
I would say, for us, probably, we can get that transferred in the next couple of weeks.
Oh, that'd be great.
Then it has to go to the other companies as well after that.
Okay. So, we have some movement going on there, and it's, you know, it's working to the neighborhood's reactions. Okay. I have another one, Fernwood Ave. This gentleman has been speaking for months and months and years in reference to this. And it's a double poll, right adjacent to the Walgreens. And it's ticket number 2178738, or is it 2428605? There's only two on Fernwood Ave, so it's the one adjacent to the parking lot at Walgreens. And he, this gentleman, has been asking of this for years. And it's like almost unfair that he has to keep calling me to remind me that this is in place, and I keep giving him the same answer, that we're working on it. And that, after a while, it becomes routine, and it's not really an acceptable response.
Yeah, both of those are Verizon bond courts, so what I'll do is I'll have operations take a look at that and put it on the schedule.
Okay.
I will tell you, in looking at this from, you know, a more global perspective, we have a number of polls that we're going to have to come in, like Dan has done, send a crew in and work this. But, you know, those two polls kind of stand out, particularly the one that's been there for a while.
And the other one, we're cleaning up Folsom Street somewhat. We're trying to make it more attractive for the neighborhood because they have to go through, experience years of poor street, and now we've got that repaved. So, there's a poll at 2259805, and that's been in the works since July of 2014.
Correct.
And it says, what are we doing with that?
Again, that's in our ball in court.
Verizon?
Yep.
And we're going to do something about that?
Well, again, I'll bring it back to operations.
And just to belabor, one more, Hutchinson Street. We have four locations there. And so, we've got some activity that, you know, that's really not a long street that to experience four poll locations at that site. And one dates back to November of 2014.
There's only one that's in our ball in court.
Which one is that?
We'll track down who else is, if you pull that sheet out. Yeah, it looks like there's a combination of people on. One is Grid, one is ours, as I've mentioned, and the other is Comcast.
The other two are Comcast.
Do we have any relief in sight? Is there going to be something accomplished there in a reasonable time?
I can't speak for other companies.
Okay.
We did transfer.
Dan, how's National Grid doing?
Yeah, we transferred one on, it's within the last month here.
Which one would that be?
That would be Paul.
You have a ticket number?
We transferred 2992448, that's the one we transferred. It's now in Comcast's ball in court. We have one more to do myself.
So, when we do these, we submit these to us for these locations, what's the sense of having a ticket number if we're talking poll numbers? Shouldn't the poll number precede the ticket number?
It's a database that we don't, you know, it's set up for operations.
Right.
And I've tried to make sure, as we all have, that you see what we see.
Right.
So, the ticket number, you know, is something that, you know, can identify that particular poll, no question. But also, the poll number itself is more germane to the way that we would look at it politically.
Right. And that's, can't we get them to talk in those terms? If they have to keep these ticket numbers in place, can they someplace put the poll number so we'll be able to carry on a conversation with both of us knowing?
Poll number is on that list as well. You see, you know.
I don't have that.
Seventh column.
Seventh column?
Maybe I'll have it in the email.
Okay. All right.
So, both numbers are in, you know, or should, you should have them on.
Okay.
But, you know, it is better, I think, that we work with poll numbers. It makes it so much easier.
And in Mountain Ave, there's three locations that we're still looking at. And other than that, you know, there are a couple that need assistance, but I'm not going to be pushy at one conversation here. Just, if I can get a couple out of those right now, as soon as possible, that would be beneficial to my residents.
Well, you know, typically, as both companies like to do, send crews in universally. We can pick a couple of these off, if you will.
Okay.
But, you know, unless I can tell you that we're going to have a crew in in December or January, then, you know, getting these one at a time becomes problematic because I can't get operations to focus on a schedule. They'll pick this.
Yeah, I know. And I'm also mindful of the fact that the weather will be coming in very soon, so we'll be also halting the project completely when we get the inclement weather. And so, we'll be dealt with a little setback there as it is. So, if we can get these few that I've talked about, the ball moving in each court to see if we can get it rolling for those residents that are really, they really experience, namely the two that I mentioned out, I'd really love to see them, 77 Romney and Walgreens. Those two are really, they've been ongoing for a long, long time. Thank you, I appreciate your help. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Guanasso. Councillor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gentlemen, welcome. I guess I'll do a stand. How was your vacation? I know you were away, so you can't hide it.
I couldn't go on vacation.
Oh, okay.
My brother got seriously ill.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm still looking at that poll at the corner of Beach and Ocean Ave. It shows 312 on this, on this list, but on the actual poll, it's 392. I've mentioned that to you before. There's nothing on it, it's a double poll.
Get that straightened out. It's an issue as to whose responsibility it is, but we'll straighten it out.
Well, you know, either one of you take it down, we don't care. It's been, it's been like this for years. You know, I think it's very unsightly. Dan, as far as you're concerned, I'm still looking for that poll at 414 Beach, poll 414 on Beach Street.
Yeah, that's us.
So, still looking for that. That's empty. It's ready to come down. Also, poll 38 on the Revere Beach Parkway, Notchell Road. That's been ready to come down for five years. Okay, the next one is poll 726 on James. That's been waiting for a National Grid transfer for three years. And there's, and what happened was, they put, they have two sets of polls. There's a double poll, and then the poll west of that one. They all have the same number on it, 726. So, someone has to square that away. Am I right? 726?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, that may even be confusing to some of the guys in Ops, I don't know, so.
No, I'm just reading here. We've got our own spreadsheet that we're working on, that we have it working in.
Okay.
We didn't have a work request created for that, but we'll take care of it.
The other issues are the concrete panels we talked about several months ago have not been done yet. And also, the trench, that sunken trench at 223 Walnut Ave. It's that Bay Cove building. So, other than that, that's it for me for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Nowosowski. Councillor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned to both you gentlemen prior to the meeting, Baverd Street, there's a bunch of wires that are really hanging low, and the trucks go up there and they knock them down. So, when do you think you may be able to get the?
Mayor, I'll put that in dispatch tomorrow because what they'll do is they'll ride the street, determine, you know, who has to come out to graze them.
Okay.
It may be us, it may be Comcast, but if they're low wires, it's typically us.
They are. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Haas. Councillor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Stand on Clifton Street. It was ready to, the poll was ready to come down, but unfortunately, Comcast, when they transferred their wire, they hooked it around that pole. If you remember, we had to, we had to, they had to go back, and we had to wait for them to go back and unhook it around the new pole and leave, the old pole rather, and leave it stable so they could, so you guys could take it down. That's been done quite a while ago.
Yeah, it shows as our ball in court.
And it's ready to come out, so if you could take care of that one. Because it's really on the corner of Salem Street and Clifton, and it's kind of a dangerous spot. And I just want to thank you for, when I had Ashley send you the email on Ian Road, the two polls that were, that were supposed to be taken down several years ago, but they, when the guy needed a service call, the, your man from the Verizon wouldn't climb the polls. But you took, thanks for the quick response, putting the new polls in, and he's very, the resident's very happy today. Just let's not hope he has to wait two years to get the old polls taken out. But thanks again. Okay.
Thank you, Councillor Patch. Councillor Zambudo.
Yeah, yeah, this was a couple of weeks ago.
Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you. I thought my colleague was before me, but that's okay. I only have one quick thing. Dan, this is for you. There was some work done on Yeman Street near the police station, and it's been brought to my attention that the concrete was taken out and was patched with Bitcon. I said, I believe that's a temporary patch with the Bitcon, and they certainly will come back to fix it with concrete. Am I correct?
Yes, you are correct, yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Zambudo. Councillor Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gentlemen, once again, I have to give you the lament that I've been giving you each and every time. I've gone through this list, and I see, I'm not, I underlined certain polls that are in Ward Four. I didn't even bother underlining 2014 and 2015 polls because there's so many back from before that, that it's clear to me that there's something systemically wrong here if we can't get a poll out in two years. And I'm going to tell you what I read here. I read a poll on Dedham Street, 8713, two years it's been in. Fernwood Avenue, aforementioned by my colleague, that's not only in, it's cemented in, and nothing's been done with that. And I can see why, because you know you're going to have to dig up the cement. It's got to be done anyway. Hancock Street.
As I told you, and that's by the Walgreens.
Yeah.
And we did discuss this, and it's a conduit that Comcast has to replace and remove.
Right. But we keep discussing it. I know Comcast isn't here tonight. But that's just systemic. I mean, Stan, frankly, almost the rest of them are all Verizon, so let's forget that for a second, okay? Hancock Street, 2012. This is 11A, 2012. Three years this poll has been double-polling in that ground. Mountain Avenue, 2012. Oxford Street, two from 2013. A 2010 on Park Avenue. I don't know whether they're in, that's the lower end of Park Avenue, or not, that apparently they're going to start pulling those polls by the school this week. Let's hope so. That'll be at least one that'll get out of there. South Hancock Street, in South Irving Street, 2013. Suffolk Avenue, 2011. Two on Vane Street from 2013. Like I said, I didn't even look at the 2014, 2015s. You know, somebody has to come here and tell us, what is a reasonable time to get double polls out? Maybe people think it's a year, 18 months, or something like that. I don't think anybody can think it's two years and more. I don't really think that. I can't imagine anybody sitting here in this city council thinking that double polls that have been in the ground ought to be in there more than, more than, more than two years. So, all I can say is, I mean, you consider, you can consider me asking you to redo those polls that I just mentioned, having done so, but I don't think I should be up here, or anybody should be up here, asking for seven or eight polls at a time, over and over and over again, every time you come in. It just doesn't make any sense. I just think we're, this is just a waste of time if we can't at least be within two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Riordan. Anyone else on polls? Okay, I just have a couple of requests. There are two double polls on Norman Street, and they've been there for some time.
Okay, both are, okay.
Is there, are they scheduled to be moved, or?
They'll be scheduled when we can get the crews in to do more comprehensive, you know, scheduling here. I mean, picking these off two at a time is not really the answer for anybody.
I understand that, but they are, they will get done.
They're ours.
ASAP. Dan, I, these two are for you. I spoke before, there's a light on a pole in the central parking lot off of Central Ave. It's very dangerous for the residents down there. This is, pardon me, it's not my ward, but the only reason I mention it is because I almost tripped the other night down there, visiting someone. It's right on, it's right in the parking lot. If you went in the parking lot and drove straight down from Central Ave, it's probably about 75 feet down on the right, it's the first pole you'll see. And the other thing is, on Wetherby Avenue, there's a double poll, and it's a recent one. But there is an urgency with regard to that poll because the people are looking to put in a driveway and do some work on the walkway down there. And I believe Stan was kind enough, it was a rotted pole, and Stan was kind enough to get that resolved. That's the one I believe we spoke on the phone about. It's at the end of Wetherby Avenue on the left at the corner of Rice. So, if we could get that done ASAP, I'd certainly appreciate it, and I know the residents down there would. Any other questions, anyone? Gentlemen, I thank you very much for your attendance here this evening. As always, you're right on the job.
Mr. President, I'm sure Dan will agree. We'll send in our contact information so that all the councillors have it. In the event that something comes up, you can get in touch with us, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We won't have to wait for these.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number two is the report of the zoning subcommittee.
Councillor Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we had one matter before the zoning subcommittee, and that is proposal of David Massey to construct a, two townhouses on Lot 1A on Lamson Street. The zoning subcommittee considered it with, along with site plan review's recommendations, which I'll quickly go over. One, that the proposed driveway shall be 20 feet in width. Two, that the landscaping plan shall be approved by the Site Plan Review Committee, include the planting of at least six trees along the frontage of Lamson Street. A landscape buffer zone shall be provided along the northerly property line in accordance with the landscaping plan to be approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. In accordance with Section 17.24.010 of the ordinances, at least 30 percent of the site shall be comprised of open space, and all landscaped and open areas, space areas shall be irrigated and shall be maintained by the owner of the property. Three, 20-foot-wide sewer easement shall be maintained on the site and shown on the plan with no encroachment to be allowed within the easement area. Four, the water sewer and drainage infrastructure servicing the property shall be approved by the city engineer, and the applicant shall undertake any onsite and offsite infrastructure improvements as required by the city engineer, DPW superintendent, and fire chief. Five, all curbing within the site shall be granite or concrete, and all walkways and sidewalks shall be concrete. Six, 40 percent of the yard shall be open space, front yard shall be open space, and there shall be no parking allowed within the front yard of each unit except where there is a garage under. And seven, the project proponent must pay a sewer mitigation fee, which is based on 10 times 110 gallons per bedroom times $1.30 per gallon. Again, the zoning subcommittee considered all of those, as well as the application itself, and has recommended it to the city fully tonight, and along with the Site Plan Review Committee's recommendations.
Roll call.
Shall the city council grant the relief requested on the special permit application C-15-10 for 1A Lamson Street, subject to the findings and conditions of Site Plan Review? Councillor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. The special permit has been granted. Calendar item number three, report of the appointment subcommittee.
Councillor Guanasso.
Mr. President, earlier this, earlier this afternoon, the appointment subcommittee met, and we had three items on the agenda prior to our meeting here. Reappointment of John Collarin, 21 Thurlow Ave, Revere, Resident Employment Monitoring Committee. Reappointment of Pasquale De Feo Jr., 84 Travalli Road, Revere, as a constable. And reappointment of Michael B. Fixman, 72 Hancock Street, Everett, Mass., as a constable. Mr. President, they were all voted out favorably by the subcommittee. I ask if there's no objections, that we take all these at once and vote them out favorably as a committee of the whole. Thank you, Mr. President.
Let's do it. Let's do it. Thank you, Councillor Guanasso. All roll, please.
Shall the city council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairman Guanasso? Councillor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Riordan?
Mr. President, I have a business relationship with two of the gentlemen, but as we're taking all three up, I will recuse myself in both presence on all three.
Councillor Riordan, present. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes. The appointments have been confirmed. Calendar item number four, communication from the Board of Assessors requesting a public hearing for the purpose of establishing the minimum residential factor.
Lay this on the table. They'll be coming up here to discuss this. Oh, okay, I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm looking, no, I'm looking at five, I'm sorry. Yeah, number four, public hearing.
Calendar item number five, communication from the Board of Assessors relative to the acceptance of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5C and 1/2, regarding the initial exemption percentage.
Five, six, and seven. Lay on the table. They'll be coming up for discussion.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Pasquale De Feo, 84 Travalli Road, as a constable.
Appointment Subcommittee.
Mr. President, we took those out of order. They came in appearance because, we took it, the city clerk can explain.
The constable appointments were up this week. So, they would have been out of work if their constable appointment was not confirmed this evening. And the same with calendar item number nine, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Michael Fixman as a constable.
Fine. Just voted those, right?
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Councillor Gino that the mayor request the DPW to assess the repairs needed for the sidewalk around the property located at 166 1-Thurlow Ave. A tree caused severe damage to the sidewalk and is a serious hazard to pedestrians.
Councillor Gino.
Thank you. This is an issue I noticed several weeks ago, but it got really bad, and a family member of mine actually tripped, and a tree uprooted, and it's caused a really big problem on that sidewalk. And it's next to a church, it's in front of a business, and there's a school across the street, so it's highly trafficked by pedestrians, and it's definitely something that needs immediate attention. Thank you.
Any other councillors want to speak on this, on the motion, all in favor, so on it.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Councillor Nowosowski that the mayor request the Superintendent of Public Works to include in the next budget to provide at least two vacuum machines in the street sweeping contract to pick up leaves in November and December. These funds should be included in all future budgets. It is also requested that the mayor approve this line item during budget deliberations.
Councillor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, most people have street sweeping every week, one word or another. And the amount of leaves that have fallen on the street, the sweeper machine cannot pick up all these leaves. And when it does go by, it leaves a bigger mess than when they started. And I did speak to the driver from Arrow Sweeping, and he recommended that we add what they call either a blower or a leaf suction, yes, suction machine, to pick up the leaves, which I've been professing for many years. But I think this is something, if we add it into the budget, and it costs extra money, this is something that people would want to see. They're getting something for their money. Leaves picked up in the middle of the road, when they get wet, they're accident prone, and it's just a difficult situation. And I hope the council approves it, and the future mayor follows up with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Nowosowski. Any other councillors? I think, I think that's an excellent motion because in some of the oldest sections of the city, where you have these large trees, there is certainly an abundance of leaves that fall, and they do cause problems. Councillor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly support the motion, but I would like to see a cost analysis of what it's going to cost. I don't want to just approve a motion that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars. I'd like to know what it costs.
Well, I'm sure the mayor will surprise us with that, I would hope. You can add that on if you want, but it'll show up in the budget anyway.
If it's amenable to the maker of the motion.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilor Guanasso?
Mr. President, why don't we just send it to Ways and Means for cost analysis, and then we can go from there?
Want to do that? Councilor Nowosowski?
The only concern I have is that we're so close to the end of the year, and it'll die. And we won't pick it up. But.
Sign died December 24th.
I just don't want to see this sign die. So, you know, I'd like to see it come out sooner than later.
On the motion, all in favor, so audit.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Councilor Reardon that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to consider the designation of the side streets on the northern side of Park Ave, Alston, Barrett, Cambridge, Dedham, Essex, Furness, Genesee, Hancock, Irving, Jarvis, Kilburn, Lambert, Madison, Newbury, and Oxford, alternating as one way.
Councilor Reardon?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I had spoken to some people on Cambridge Street. In fact, they put together a petition about this very issue. Last year, there was a major issue on Barrett Street with cars going up and going back down, facing each other, and having face-offs essentially, trying to get by. Those streets are very narrow, and furthermore, they're not very long. So they're pretty amenable, I think, to being alternating one way. Obviously, Dedham Street would not fit the way it's going right now, but I'd leave that to the Traffic Commission to figure that out. But I think this is something the Traffic Commission should consider, particularly in light of the oncoming winter season. I'd like to see this in place so that cars can actually get up and down those streets without having to fight each other, one going nose to nose. So I'd like to send this to the Traffic Commission.
Any other councillors? Going to the Traffic Commission?
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Councilor Reardon that the mayor institute a comprehensive program to enforce parking restrictions on the northern side of Park Ave in front of Harry Delarussault Stadium and the Hill School by, A, installing necessary signage to indicate that it is a no-parking zone and that parking is available after school hours in the Hill School parking lot; B, initiating an informational campaign by placing warning tags on vehicles that are presently violating the restriction, advising the owners that ticketing will begin at a designated time in the near future; and C, commencing ticketing at the designated time.
Councilor Reardon?
Well, this has been a situation that I was hoping was going to be resolved as a result of the comprehensive plan that we put together when we built the Hill School and rebuilt the Delarussault Stadium, providing over 120 parking spaces in the Hill School for after-hours recreational use. I've asked some of the users of the stadium to talk to their people and get them to start parking in that school parking lot, but they, I regularly go through there. There's about 35 cars can be parked on Park Avenue in front of the stadium and the school, 35 or 40 cars. Regularly, there are 40 or 50 empty spaces in that school parking lot while they're there. And there's no reason whatsoever that the cars can't be parked in that parking lot. It's not that much further a walk. There's a pathway from the parking lot right into the stadium. And I think it's more significant, it's significant to the neighbors, because they have trouble getting backing in and out of their driveways. They put up with an awful lot while we were building these stadiums, and I think they deserve to have the parking regulations enforced. But I think more importantly is the public safety issue. It makes that street so narrow, and the pop Warner kids get out of cars. It's only a matter of time before someone's not going to see a kid walking between those cars at dusk, and I'm very, very concerned about that. But beyond that, Mr. President, the residents deserve it, and we, those are parking regulations that need to be enforced at this point. And there is a very, very good alternative, that being the school parking lot. So I'd ask that the administration act on this as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Councilor Reardon. Any other councillors want to speak on this, on the motion? All in favor, so audit.
There's a late communication from the mayor relative to an additional bond authorization for the Garfield School Roof Repair Feasibility Study in the amount of $77,000.
That'll go to Paul Gary? Yeah.
Late motion presented by Councilor Powers that the mayor request the DPW to install a no-parking sign and repaint the yellow curbing on the even side of Pleasant Street. Further, once this work is completed, that the no-parking regulation be enforced by parking control.
Yeah, this has been a problem over there for some time. I know that the parking people do ticket. But the problem is that there's no parking sign over there. And perhaps in the yellow line that's there on the curb is very faded. So I think that there might be some people that are going into the dog grooming place over there that don't see the yellow line, or don't realize it's there, and subsequently park there, impede people that want to use that drive-up mailbox, and also wind up getting a ticket themselves. So I would ask that this be done. And I think that'll prevent a lot of the no-parking there on that spot. Any other councillors want to speak on the motion? On the motion, so.
Late motion presented by Councilors Orego, Haas, Powers, and Gino that the mayor request the Director of Finance to address the city council with an update on the FY '16 budget, specifically addressing any new employees that have been hired and any pay raises that have been granted since the FY '16 budget was approved by the city council.
Councilor Orego?
Thank you, Ms. President. As we come up to the end of the year, I think it's important for us to get an update on the '16 budget and where we stand currently. And I think specifically, I'd like to see the amount of new hires that we've had in the last few months, and if there have been any salary increases in the last few months. And I think this is important information going forward, and I look forward to hearing from the Director of Finance. And I think that we'll be prepared to make sure that we're in good shape budget-wise. And I think it'll be important for the city council going forward to be addressed regularly on budget matters, and especially around hiring and around pay raises. So I look forward to that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Orego. Councilor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Are we meeting next week?
No, we're meeting on the 30th.
I would like to have Mr. Anzoni's response to this in our boxes by the Friday prior to that meeting.
It's two weeks away. There's no reason we can't.
Right. I was somewhat taken back when I heard some rumors that some people got pay raises in the city. The only one that can issue pay raises or stipends within the city is the city council. We have to approve all of these pay increases, stipends, whatever they may be. All right? Now, I'm hoping that when we get this information, that it resolves the problem. Hopefully, it didn't happen, but if it did happen, we should be the first ones to be aware of it. Also, when we hire people from outside, they have to, and they don't live in Revere, we have to get a waiver on that aspect.
I was going to mention that also.
Okay. And I think we better get a financial house in order at this point in time. Thank you.
Any other councillors?
Mr. President, just really quickly, if we want to send this to committee, I don't mind having a committee meeting to discuss this sooner rather than later. I think it is pretty imperative information. And I think the sooner we have the conversation about the '16 budget, the better. So if you want to send it to committee, we can have a committee meeting.
I'd rather get a response right from Mr. Anzoni by the 30th of the month, and then, you know, we can discuss it at that point. Councilor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I just heard a bunch of stuff here. Sounds like hearsay to me. There's people making accusations that there's been pay raises given out. There's accusations that there's people being hired that we don't know about. Until I see evidence of that, I'm pretty skeptical of this. The only raises I know about are union raises that were negotiated, which we don't have any say in. But if I see evidence to the contrary, I'll stand corrected. But I don't like hearing hearsay thrown out at the city council here.
Point of information, Mr. President.
State your point, Councilor.
I think what we want to do is resolve the issue before it becomes an issue. And that, I think, is the best way.
So we're sharing rumors here. Is that what we're doing?
No, we're not.
Okay.
Gentlemen.
Factually, the information I have.
Gentlemen, we don't know if these are rumors, and I think it's incumbent upon us as the city council that oversees all of the expenditures to make sure that that isn't happening. If you hear conversation out on the street, it's credible, who knows? Let's find out and put it to sleep, once and for all.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilor Guanasso?
Mr. President, prior to the meeting of November 30th, why don't we have a subcommittee meeting of Ways and Means at 5:00 to discuss this particular purpose, and only this particular purpose? This way here, you afford the opportunity for an hour's time, and within an hour, we should have sufficient information to go forward.
I think that's fine, and maybe we can get the information submitted to us before the 30th.
Prior to the 30th?
And maybe have Mr. Anzoni come up here if anybody has any questions.
But I think the city clerk should notify, in terms of a communication to the director, that this is the information that the council's looking for, and we go forward from there.
I think that's an excellent idea, Councilor. Anyone else want to speak on this, on the motion? All in favor, so audit.
Mr. President, can I speak on an issue here?
On this issue here?
No. That issue, you already banged it through. I'd like to have the city clerk read a communication the city council passed over three months ago.
This is to Mr. Ray Foucher of the DCR. Dear Mr. Foucher, pursuant to the City Revere Council Order Number 15-171, would you please look into the feasibility of changing the parking signs on Revere Beach Boulevard from Bianchi's Pizza up to Revere Street on both sides to no parking from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. in order to avoid commuters from parking in that area all day?
As we discussed at the meeting over three months ago, the people who park there are people from the North Shore. You can go by, I go by there every day. I see Melrose, Marblehead, Swamsgate, Lynn, et cetera. Now, for the people who utilize the beach, and the business people who work there, all right, it's hindering their business. And I think we should treat this section of the boulevard the same as we do the balance of the boulevard. Because the balance of the boulevard has defined areas that eliminate commuter parking, and this area should also be considered the same.
Mr. President, if I may, point of information. Just, you know, for what it's worth, I think we ought to resend that letter, because Ray Foucher retired over four months ago.
That's why he hasn't responded.
So I think we ought to send it, we ought to send it to the commissioner.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
I recommend that we send it to the commissioner.
That's why he hasn't responded.
I think that is a good suggestion. We have businesses down there. And more importantly, we have residents down there, too, that may want to park there. So, you know, we're catering to people that live in Swamsgate and Marblehead that want to come to the city and save $5 or $4, whatever it is, from parking down on the boulevard. And it's not fair to the residents down there or the businesses. Any more business? No further business. This council will stand adjourned until November 30th at 6:00 p.m., noting that there will be a Ways and Means meeting at 5:00 on that evening also. So.